I call this meeting of the Upshur County Board of Education to order, first order of business is to stand and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Upshur County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Thank you. Please let the clerk note that all members are present. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and/or agenda adjustments.
Do you have some additions? We do have, included in your pack, there are some additions to personnel. Also, you have an extra three pages. One is a consent agenda item for shade wood to do extracurricular trips. And the other is a memo about two comments on Policy 4011.2. And I also would like to have a student hearing at the end for possible discipline and possible action regarding student discipline.
Yeah, I would ask for an executive session after Item 7 on the agenda for personnel.
So after Item 7?
Yeah. Yes, and it would be in reference to West Virginia Code 69A4B2A for the purpose of matters arising from the appointment of a public officer, namely filling the Upshur Board of Education position having been vacated through the departure of Carl Robbie Martin.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda with these adjustments?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Item 5 on the agenda are the minutes. They're from your January 9th regular meeting. Any questions about those?
Will they accept these as presented?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 6, acknowledgements and/or announcements, Upshur High School.
We do have our Keys of Excellence employees for January. Before that, though, I would like to announce that Mrs. Nesselrod was informed yesterday, I think, four, a couple days ago, that we received, it's called an emergency grant from the State Department, $1,000 for a backpack program. So she'll get that out to buy supplies for backpacks. Every little bit helps. And I know they're trying to get one started at the high school center. And it's going to make me go for that, help with that. So we're excited about that. Okay. Around. Our January Keys of Excellence Award winner for Professional Employee of the Month is Cheryl Kane, from Bacana, Upshur High School. Congratulations. I'm going to take pictures first. And then I'll get to read why she was nominated.
Just take a reading.
And I can't tell her who nominated her.
Right.
But you may figure it out. Okay. Cheryl works diligently with the Silk Team and the LSIC to make positive changes not only to the school climate and instruction, but also to the beautification of the school campus. Cheryl volunteers her time after school to work with the BUHS cross-country team and also works with the BUMS team in order to help groom them for involvement in the high school team, once they reach this level. Cheryl works tirelessly with the English department during our PLC meetings to facilitate discussions about classroom initiatives that deepen student learning and understanding of cognitive development. Cheryl has attended the high schools that work, summer conferences, over the past couple of years, and return with exciting ideas for the department to investigate further. She's taken on the role of mentor for our newest English department member and spends her time developing and understanding of best practices that make positive impacts in the high school English classroom. Cheryl can be found working with students before school, during lunch, and after school. She spends many hours outside of the school day, working on the flower beds outside, drafting designs for new landscaping projects with the LSIC, and reading several books to improve her instructional design. Congratulations. Cheryl is here as Tammy is. Tammy, come on up. Tammy Kelly is our Service Employee of the Month for January. Congratulations. Sorry about that. And I'll read. My Tammy was chosen. Tammy is the head cook here at, in the cafeteria here at Upshur Middle. She's willing to help me, when I don't know for sure what to do. She takes her job to heart and tries to make sure everyone does the job the way they should. Congratulations. Short and sweet. That's it.
Our next item on the agenda is the interview of candidates for Board of Education on expired term.
I would like to make a motion that we table the interview process due to candidates, some candidates not being able to be in attendance, but I would ask that the candidates here would be allowed to stand, state their name, and the district that they're in.
Second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Weiss, just a second.
Dave Weiss, District 1.
I'm going to stand over there. Stephen Nesbitt, I'm representing Daniel Nesbitt, District 2.
Peggy Hall, District 1.
Kristy Wilkerson, District 1.
Shane Jenkins, District 1.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session, West Virginia Code 69A4B2A for the purpose of matters arising from the appointment of a public officer, namely the filling of the Upshur County Board of Education position having been vacated through the departure of Carl Robbie Martin.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session.
You all can either go.
Sorry, that means you have to.
Go that way or go out.
Do I have a motion to go to regular session?
Second.
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 All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're now in regular session. Do I have a motion for the appointment of a replacement for the unexpired term?
I move that we appoint Kristy L. Wilkerson as a replacement for the Board of Education for the unexpired term.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to thank all the applicants. I'd like to thank you for your community support, and I ask that, you know, you'll continue to give the community the support. And I just ask prayers for our school system and our country.
I just wanted to add, it was really wonderful to read through everyone's letters and the materials you sent. It was very obvious that we have so many people who are dedicated to our schools and who are integrated into the very fabric of our schools, and so it was just really beautiful to see. So I just want to say thank you to everyone here and in absent, who could be here, but it really means a lot to know that so many people care about our kids.
I concur with that.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business.
All right, well, Hodgesville, we were able to fix a major water leak. We had to go ahead and run the pipe inside the school, did plan to do it for spring break. Got that settled, and cold spell, we, this weekend, well, actually, on the day of Martin Luther King, January 15th, we had water leak in the kitchen at the high school. Unfortunately, someone was there, that could have really been catastrophic.
Is it the high school?
It was the high school in the kitchen. The problem has been addressed, and water flooding will never happen again. Other than that, it's just, you know, chasing and maintaining, keeping up with things as they fail, or, you know, need repairs of various kinds.
Any movement on the work in the kitchen at the high school? Ovenhead?
We're waiting for, in the Pro Start, that's the classroom you're referring to with the?
Hood.
The hood. There's a company ASAP that has to move fire suppression.
So we're waiting on somebody else to?
We're waiting on someone else.
Okay, all right.
There's been so many broken pipes, you know, uncertainty is far greater priorities than that.
Certainly, yes.
Once they can move it, they'll finish the installation.
Next item on the agenda are financials.
The only thing I have for you to type is the audit is nearly complete, the audit report is in a final draft stage and should be released by the auditor soon. And I'm working on closing December, and should have December financials for you for the next board meeting.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a request from Bacana Softball Boosters for the high school girls softball team to travel to the Grandstand Softball Classic in Myrtle Beach during spring break. That is your attachment B.
Motion to approve.
And shade wood.
Oh, yes, and the bus operator, extracurricular. Sorry.
Second.
All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item on the agenda, item 12, your policies. We have the third reading and approval of proposed revised policy 9004, Policy for Curricular and Extracurricular Bus Trips. That is your attachment C. Any new comments on that? Do I have a motion to accept this approved, proposed revised 9004?
So.
Second. All those in favor, please sign them by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You also have, for perusal, attachment D, the second reading of Policy 4011, Expected Behaviors and Saving Sport in Schools. And the second reading of proposed revised policy, the Alternative Education, attachment E, that's also a piece of that, right?
Right, and we do have the comments there, the three pages there. Some changing of wording that we're going to need to do.
Right, we'll have it fixed.
So as far as the change, you're going to change page four, number nine?
Yeah, the transitional class is not for disruptive students.
Okay.
It's for students who are behind in credits. We think we need to pull that over there. Whereas the alternative school is for disruptive.
But you're going to go from 30, 30 students to 25?
Yeah, because of the size of the room.
It actually lost space when the wall was constructed.
To add the alternative school to winter day.
Correct. And then Mrs. Loudon wanted to make sure there's a clarification inserted on moving the gang activity from the Level 2 to the Level 3. That will be reflected in the next comments period.
Item 13, discussion of flood insurance.
Come back here so you can hear me better. I put this on the agenda because if you've been following the news, you know down in Nicholas County, when they had the big rainstorm down there, they had a couple of schools that were destroyed in the flood, and they were buildings that they never thought would have that kind of problem. They'd been there for many, many decades, not a problem. And when we were submitting our SBA project in Fall, I was informed during that process that we probably should not even bother submitting something for Hodgesville because it's in the flood plain, and that probably would mean that the SBA would not be inclined to fund any projects. That's a change in thinking for them. So it got me looking at our flood insurance coverage. Now, we meet state requirements as far as Hodgesville and Fred Everly are defined as being in the FEMA flood plain according to FEMA maps, and we have the insurance that's required by the state for those buildings. But when you look at the policies, they only cover about $500,000 of damage to the building itself and about $300,000 contacts. Given that it costs anywhere from $5 to $15 million building an elementary school, $500,000 isn't going to go there. So I've been talking with Jamie about flood insurance in general and some of the other coverages that are out there, and so I wanted to ask Jamie to come and talk to you about those programs. And we're going to come back to you in the future with some proposals for you to consider about extending coverage of some of the buildings, not only Hodgesville and Fred Everly, but I think this building is in a situation where it's not inconceivable that you could have a major flood event on this site and lose the school. Academy is another building that I'm worried about because you've got that hill up above it. If you had enough rain in a short period of time on that hill, there's already had the spring that runs in that area. You've got, on the street side, the ward officer, even in the middle of summer, you could hear water running through the hallway out there, where it hasn't rained days or weeks. So I'm not sure how much money we want to spend to cover our schools, but I'd like to at least have a conversation and try to make some decisions about what we should do. I'm going to turn over to Jamie, I hope, give some information about flood insurance. Please come up.
Again, George called me and asked if we could just give some basic information and a review of some of the flood insurance information.
Can you introduce yourself?
I apologize. Yeah, my name's James Powell with Loudon Insurance Agency in Bacana. We worked with the board on various policies within the Board of Education. What we're going for the flood aspect of it is, as George mentioned, we currently have flood insurance policies for Hodgesville and for some of the Fred Everly buildings. When you're looking at the flood insurance, one thing to keep in mind, the flood insurance all goes through NFIP, which stands for the National Flood Insurance Program. The other thing about flood insurance, different than any other insurance policy out, if you're insuring a flood insurance building because it goes through the NFIP, the premium or the rate for flood insurance is the same no matter what insurance. Like in our agency, we have several different carriers that write flood insurance, but it's the exact same premium, it's the same quoting information, it's the same process through everybody, anyone, because all flood insurance ultimately goes back to them. Now, the National Flood Insurance Program rates their flood insurance on several different zones. I can pass out just a brief handout if you guys would like. And again, this is just some overview of the information. As George mentioned, there are several different flood zones. If you look around Bacana and Upshur County, Flood Zone AE is going to be what the Fred Everly is in, or at least some of their properties are in. According to the National Flood Insurance Program, they view those as buildings that are within the 100-year flood zone, and they give them a 1% chance of flooding. So essentially, they're expecting them to flood one year out of every 100. Now, some of these buildings, they could flood three, four, five, six times, or they cannot. It just, I would phrase it as, those buildings have a very high probability of flooding. If you look at Upshur County, on the very last section of this is kind of a map of, and this is just up on the top of this map, it's kind of like downtown Main Street, back in through the middle, and it's hard to see, you sort of the main town, and then over through here, you can see around where the Pope Bridge is and where it comes back down. Now, on the next, one of the pages back, if anybody ever wanted to, you can pull up the maps and actually see where they're at. With, like I said, in Bacana or Upshur County, we've got, the buildings that are in that zone are automatically covered. The next flood zones you're going to hear us talk about is going to be a Flood Zone X. A Flood Zone X from the National Flood Insurance Program is essentially a building relocation that they put in the 100 to 500-year flood zone, and they give those a greater than 0.2% chance of flooding. Hodgesville falls in that flood zone, and in the Hodgesville area, we've seen several gallons of water coming to some of the buildings around that and get up very close to it. So Hodgesville is a building which is very, very close to it. Every other building currently is in what's called Flood Zone D, which is one of the Fred Everly buildings, which is just flood hazards that are undetermined but possible. If you look at that realistically, I don't know how they came up with that. It probably should be a Flood Zone X or AE that they labeled it with, meaning it's going to possibility just because of where it's at. Academy and all the other schools are going to be in Flood Zone X, which they call Other Flood Areas. It just means they are outside of the 500-year flood estimation. So they give them less than a 0.2% chance of flooding. Your rate as far as insuring one of those buildings is at least to convince you of anything or any of the rates out because of that. Now, with that being said, please keep in mind, that does not mean these buildings cannot flood. Unfortunately, one of the drawbacks to floods in the southern part of the state that happened is, the majority of those individuals did not have flood zones or did not have flood insurance, and a lot of those properties were not in a flood zone because it had never flooded there. The Board of Education had one property that was very, very close. It took us a little while to actually come back with any sort of a rough quote estimate, and that is going to be the bus garage. It's actually deemed outside of that 500-year flood plain, but it's, it's got to be running 10, 15 feet on either side of the bus garage as far as where the plane actually goes through. We had to wait for FEMA to come in and do determination as to where it's at. The locations that George and myself discussed, that we would always worry about something, and again, this is not FEMA for any of that aspect, it will be the bus garage, the middle school, just because you do have the river closed, you've got the hills coming back through. A lot of times, too, you'll see flood planes get rewritten any time there's a lot of new construction. We don't directly have any of that in the area, but sometimes that can change how water comes off hills or valleys, which is what happened a lot in the Southern part. Basically, there's no rivers, there's nothing that came up, they just got so much rain coming off the mountains, it had almost created a gun valley. General idea on prices, and again, this is very general because we didn't come through, we didn't walk off the buildings or anything for them. For most of these buildings that are not in a flood plain like Academy, for example, that does not have a, or a building does not have a basement for $500,000 in building coverage, to $50,000 per person, probably looking at about $2,078 a year. If there is a basement like the middle school, because it's got a below-elevation area that could flood, that jumps up to about $3,061 a year. And then we looked into excess, if you wanted to cover more, an excess like a $2 million policy, which should be about another $2,700 a year. One thing to keep in mind, too, is, a lot of people think of insurance as your home. When you're insuring your home, you're insuring it for a total loss. That's one thing, if it's a $200,000 home, you're saying, if a fire comes through to my house and I lose everything, how much is it going to cost to rebuild? Most of the flood insurance maps are looking at, particularly if you're not in a flood zone, are thinking the maximum, or they believe it's probably the most water you would give in a building is about a foot. But a foot of water inside of a building can still do a lot of damage, and can add up a lot of cost very quickly. Does anybody have any questions on the overviews, or? It's a lot of information, sort of generically brought out.
Considering that there have been floods in Southern Florida State, if you cover a building, at least you, the board like ourselves, we're considering that it could flood, so that's a preparation for individuality that we haven't thought about before.
That's exactly right. And that's what you're looking for. I mean, when you're making the decision, particularly for a building that's not in the flood plain, you're making that decision on, do you think there's a reasonable chance that something could cause a flood into that building, into that location? And to give you coverage for it. And then the next question is how much you want to look at. Because unfortunately, there have been a lot of places flooded, and we just never expected were going to occur. And the flood planes, particularly after every major flood, the flood planes all get redrawn. And that's what happened after the flood of '85, '88, the flood planes were redrawn to include the areas that they didn't think were going to flood before. And it does happen, a lot of it happens due to changing. If you look at downtown, for example, I remember now the fire department's built up high, you've got all of that. If there's ever a major flood that comes through that area, yet where all of the water was sitting before, you can't go to some of those same places, so where's that water going to go? So we could almost say for a fact that those previous flood planes could not have been exactly correct, because by the changes we've done, we have repositioned where the water would have to go in that area. Academy School, which George mentioned, again, I'm not saying to purchase, not purchase, that would flood or not purchase, but you've got the hill coming off down the other side of where McDonald's is. A lot of work was redone, revamping some of that and reworking into it. Could that change how water could come off into it? I think the board, over the years, has also done things for the school and changes them. So all of that redraws, or would change how water goes.
The water tank ruptured one time back in the '30s, I think, and the water did rush down and knocked some houses off their foundation on Kenosha.
And that's what's happened in the past, it's essentially created a valley. Now, if I look at the schools in general, some of your schools are really sitting at the top of the mountain, there's nothing, if you get a hard rain, Washington District, it's going to hit, it's going to go down. And I don't really see how some of those schools, again, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but to me, it would be very difficult for some of those schools to actually get flooded. And then there are others, like the middle school, when you're sitting this close to the Bacana River, who knows what could happen if we had a hard enough rain.
Question also, there's more and more disasters, it seems, around the country, at least we hear about them more. This is federally qualified insurance, they're raising the premium, aren't they, to cover disasters in other parts of the country? So, I mean, what you quote here could go up 25% a year or something like that?
No, I would, you're exactly right. The flood insurance is, part of the reason it's done by the federal, the National Flood Insurance Program, is because if an individual insurance carrier were to provide this coverage, it would be unaffordable by anybody, by any standards, especially for locations within those 100-year flood plains. especially for locations within those 100-year flood planes. You get into the locations that are out, it might be a different story. But if you looked at that program as a whole, for the federal government, it's been running fairly substantially in the red. And the rates have gone up over the last several years. Now, if you've got a property that is located inside of one of the main flood zones, which in that second page, is going to be all of these high-risk areas, A, AE, A1 through 30, which is like, the AE is going to be Fred Everly, and you have a bank loan or any type of loan on the property, you're required by law to carry the flood insurance, because that's just where they deem it to be. Once you get into the areas that are outside of the flood zone, like the locations you're looking at, those locations on pricing have been much more stable over the last five to 10 years. And I don't know the exact percentage of statistics, but at one particular point in time, it's something like 70% of the flood dollars spent each year were on properties that have flooded multiple times, which hits back to those AE, those high-risk zones. Coastal areas, even if you look at Buchanan, when FEMA came in, the North Buchanan Park, there was, at one point, that was homes and houses in it, and FEMA came in and has tried to buy out flood programs, tried to buy out the homes to where they can't continue to flood. But, so, the flood insurance has been going up over the several years, particularly those flood zones are probably going to continue. When you get into the zones that are not expected to flood, that rate has been much more stable, and I expect it to remain more stable, just because they're not expecting to pay out a high-dollar payments in those areas.
How often do they revise their maps? I see this map is September of 2010.
No, I don't have an exact answer on that. I believe a lot of times, it depends on has something happened or changed.
Recently?
Recently, to make them revise it.
Right.
So we don't have, there'd be no data for us to review it. And then even if something has happened, all of the items have caused 100-year flood maps, and yesterday, the flood of '85 would still be inside of that flood map, it'd still fit that 100-year zone. So, a lot of that depends on the need. Wish I had an exact answer for you on that.
Let me ask George a question. You're bringing this to us, and we appreciate that. Is there any likelihood that the state of West Virginia would be giving counties additional money if you consider floods?
I have not heard anything along those lines.
I mean, it'd be good thinking on their part.
I wouldn't be surprised if they will increase the requirements for us to have insurance. It's just been the last 10 years that they've required us to have insurance on Hodgesville and Fred Everly. So given the things that have happened, I would expect that they might revisit requirements and make it more stringent. I'm trying to get out ahead of that.
Any other questions?
As far as Fred Everly, are we in thirds as far as the cost of our premium with the other two existing counties? Or are we responsible?
The premium comes, is paid through funds that are available at Fred Everly. So to the extent that they have funds, it reduces what the counties have to pay. So up to this point, they've had funds at the center, either through their state aid or through other programs, that they've been able to cover the cost of that insurance, and it doesn't come back to the board directly.
Anything else for Mr. Powell, Mr. Carter? Thank you for the information. Next item on the agenda is the approval of board meeting schedule revision, that is your attachment F.
And as you directed at the last meeting, getting ready for the levy for next year. Where you see the bold italics is where we are scheduling a second meeting in schools to try and hit as many people. We'll do some publicity out there that it's, to start talking about the vote next year on the levy. And we can give them preliminary information about what's on the...
Yes, we'll have new assessed values on March 1st that would be used in the levy call. We can come up with a draft levy call based on current levy numbers. Distribute that and make it available to people for information, and solicit community input on changes to it that people would like to see.
Just making sure of the advantages that we have because of the levy over non-levy counties.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the schedule as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign up, have a say in "Aye." Next item on the agenda is personnel, that is your attachment G. Do I have a recommendation to accept that as presented?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please sign up, have a say in "Aye." We have no delegations? Board member comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Did we find anything out whether or not we could use snow packets to help with any type of snow days?
Tammy had asked me that last week, I believe, and when we met with the principals, the principals had a lot of concerns about it. Actually, today, I told Tammy I would be having a superintendent's meeting today. So I was asking our surrounding counties that are doing it, how they're doing it. Our biggest concerns as the principals was that, like if you have all the elementary schools doing packets, well, and middle and high school, first of all, are all the packets going to be the same going back home? And as I talked to other counties, I think it was, let me see, Lewis County has each teacher do their own packets. So my question was, well then, okay, I'm a teacher, and it's a lot of work to get these packets together. I'm going to give the kids three worksheets that they can complete in five minutes, and they get credit for it. And another teacher may say, "Well, I won't keep them busy while they're home." And they may have three hours, and it's the same grade. So, and then I said, "Well, what do you, how do you grade them?" And I said, "Well, one county was giving them a homework grade for the packets. The other county was giving them an attendance grade, which is going to cause, to me in my mind, all kinds of havoc. Because if, you know, if you've got half a school that the kids refuse to do it, you don't give them, you count them absent that day, your average daily attendance is going to hit the wall."
Well, about those students who don't have any kind of assistance at home?
Yeah, well, I mean, what we, I don't know, Renee, I can't remember what the other... Oh, another concern was that, it says that the packets have to be in the core subjects. Okay, well, in hearing from one of our board members, who has a husband in another county, and said, he was ecstatic because he doesn't teach a core subject, so he didn't have to make packets. And I said, I asked the other, I said, "Well, are you getting any response from your teachers for that?" One of the counties said, "Everybody makes packets, phys ed, music, art." The other one said, "Just the core subjects." I've got, I've got a lot more questions than I have answers, and they just, and what we've heard is that... I mean, I could have sent a thing yesterday to the next state board meeting saying, "We're going to do packets," and they were accepted.
And they're...
And there's not really a plan, but they're just accepting...
Were they accepted for makeup day?
That's what it's used for.
Okay.
That's what the policy says, that new policy says.
Yeah, so we have five days now that, because of our extra half hour in the schedule, that we didn't have to make up, those first five, we used accrued time. The sixth day is now going to be our OS day on February 19th. Kids will go to school that day instead of staying home. Where was I going with this now?
Do we have other days in the...
We have, oh yeah, we have five more after that.
Is that spring break?
Four of the OS days in spring break, which we haven't had the last two years.
Right.
We've used the OS days, but we guarantee them Good Friday and Easter Monday. So they have at least a four-day break during that time, and that's what we've had to do the last couple of years.
Just to be devil's advocate, I guess I don't, I don't really understand the argument of, like, the individual teachers said they're a... How that's a bad thing, because that, that already exists for normal instruction. Some teachers can choose to send open worksheets, and some teachers choose to use more in class time. I guess, I guess, like, I don't understand that as, as the argument.
Well, the only...
I understand the attendance part.
I understand, but one of the superintendents said he'd had a call from a parent who was complaining because she had two kids, different grades, and one kid has his done in five minutes, and the other kid spent three hours. And the mother was a little peeved that it doesn't, it didn't seem fair. Of course, if I'm the kid that's doing it for five minutes, I'd be ecstatic, but...
I guess, is that not reflective of how much work they have to do in their respective classes all the time now? I mean, I just, I had a third-grade teacher who gave me loads of homework that I still remember, you know? So how's that any different from regular amounts of homework?
And my feeling has been, Renee knows this, and the principals know this, to me, I get very upset when teachers, when I look at live grades for a student, and the kid has 20 grades for that quarter, and 15 of them are homework grades. I always thought homework was practice. I've learned how to do multiplication facts. Now I'm going to go home and practice them, bring them back, and show that I have been studying them. I just, and who are we grading when you send homework home? If you've got a parent that's really involved, now how do I know Mom didn't do it? Whereas, and then, what about those poor students, and we get a number of them, they get absolutely no help at home? I mean, I can argue, but I could give you arguments both ways.
Well, I'm wondering if it would be possible to move it to, you know, to, rather than, like, grading the actual, you know, a percentage of how many they scored right or wrong, you know, how many errors they had. Would it be possible for the teacher just to move to, like, a pass fail, like, on the assignment? Like it was done to the student's best ability? I don't know.
So a completion grade as opposed to a percentage of right or wrong?
You know, did the student put in the effort to do it?
Right.
And what percentage, then what percentage do you have to have who's completed it?
Well, right.
Because if I'm in a classroom of 25 kids, odds are 17 of them will finish their work, and the rest of them won't. So you're, where's, and who decides that? I mean, there are a lot of moving parts.
But we leave it up to the teachers to determine all that, so, like, we couldn't trust them with the packets.
We could trust them, it's just a lot of added work. That's, that's the piece that...
And if I can be frank, I'm not frank, but if I can be... To me, Doug, I had problems with this from the get-go. Adding a half-hour day has not really extended our day. It's just that we go 30 minutes instructional time, more than what the state requires. It's 315 minutes for elementary. So we finagle things around to make it 345. The high, middle school, 330, and the high school, 345. The day is not any longer for students. They're the ones actually getting more instructional time, which is a good thing. And then, adding the packets thing, and I hope, I don't know, we got, it's recording itself. And I don't really care, I'm not going to be here after June 17th, it's not my problem. No, no, my feeling is the legislature's gotten so much grief the last few years with the calendar, of making it up. Remember, we talked about those counties that said, "I'm not starting until after September 1st." And then they ended up going to the middle of June. Well, guess who heard about it? The legislature. So to me, it's a way to get around having to make up days. You know, that's 10 days of instruction you're actually losing, if you think about it. So we actually only require to have 170 days. And are we going full circle here? Are we going to go back to now where it doesn't, you don't make up any days? And, you know, you're Preston County, and you have 30 snow days. Where in Upsher County, many, many years ago, we missed the whole month of January, and we didn't make it up. And it was just lost instructional time. And I just think, in my own opinion, this is strictly me speaking, that it's the legislature responding to complaints about having to make up days. And, I mean, I'm not saying we're not going to do packets, but I'm saying, we are, we want to have the whole story. I don't want to cheat the kids.
Well, I want this conversation to continue. I'm not willing to say, "Let's not do this," but I, we do need to have some guidelines.
Right, and we didn't get any guidelines.
Mrs. Warner, would you like to say?
May I speak just a moment without... We have very committed teachers in Upsher County who don't want to just, on the fly, create a packet today in case we have more snow days next week. They want to take this seriously, they want to plan, they want to be purposeful about it. And I think I can speak for them, from elementary to middle to high school, that they are not interested in, "Let's just give them fluff work." We want them to be learning while they're at home. Of course, in the hands of the best instructors is where we want them in a regular instructional day. But if we were just to say, like, "I started this, let's put packets together now in case we have six or seven or eight or nine or 10 more snow days," that's probably not going to fly with our teachers, because they're going to want to put quality work in those packets. And as a principal, I wouldn't want them just to throw something together at this point. It does take conversation, it does take planning, it does take opportunities for teachers to get together, especially elementary teachers, to, "Let's, let's make those seven schools be a little more uniform in what we're going to offer." And I'd like to see us as a county plan for next year as a packet possibility, so that there's purposeful, intentional educational material that goes out to those students.
The principals' meeting, I could add, and Mrs. Warner's quite right. The principals want meaningful work, and, you know, there's a, a school district, they do the packet, and then they go back to school, and the kids still have an additional 10 days to turn it in. And I do know the instructional staff is very, very frustrated with that. And our principals want to, they're not opposed, but they want it to be meaningful, and it needs to be worthwhile. And the last thing we want our students to consider or to feel is they're just doing busy work. And that is a very defeating attitude. If kids feel that they're just doing busy work, and there's no meaning to it, or, "I put all this effort into it, and I really don't get a grade for it." Kids truly believe in fairness and justice, especially even on the high school kids. And so if I'm going to do the work, there needs to be some reward in a grade or something that's going to be recognized. Our principals voice just a thoughtful effort in this process. Not opposed to it, but a thoughtful process. So Mrs. Warner's reflecting that to the team.
Was there a discussion about the role of technology in these possible packets? I know one in Gillian County has used that.
Right, they're one-on-one with all their students.
Right.
They can send home Chromebooks or whatever, iPads, or, go ahead.
When I spoke with my leadership team about this after our pre-school's meeting, we talked about the issue of, we do have some students that don't have access to technology. I still have a teacher who, I still have a teacher who has dial-up because he lives so far up that way. One of my, the members of my leadership team lives in another county, and their county does both technology abilities and hard, hard copy packets. And so the kids have the option of doing whichever one that they can, that they can make work where they are.
I've also heard that where the technology's been used, they've, like, downloaded the assignment.
Yes, you can do that, yeah.
So you don't need internet access.
And that's, that's definite possibility. I don't know if we would have enough individual to do that for school, depending. You're talking probably French Creek and Rock Cave, nothing against them, but they're out there, and they still have dial-up. but they're out there and they still have dial-up in some areas where they didn't have.
Or none.
Or none. So would we have enough to send every kid in that school? You know, it wouldn't be every kid, obviously, but the majority of them would have to have something sent home with them if you're going to download it onto a Chrome or a stuff. And it's not that we're not working towards getting to the one-to-one, but...
Yeah, it just seems like if we're saying, like, this needs to be actually instructional and not just practice, that we're going to need some kind of, you know, video or visual piece that the technology would offer for it to truly be instructional, you know, in lieu of scaping your teacher or...
Yeah. I wonder if I could... I wonder if Channel 3 could, you know, from 9 to 10, run first grade. You know what I mean? And then from 10 to 11, second... Just so they... Because obviously, we have standards for each, but it's there. I don't know. I mean, I don't want to make a video, but... So we're going to continue to explore it?
Oh, yeah, we never stop.
All right. Could we have an executive session to go... Could we have a motion to go into executive session for student discipline?
So moved.
All those in favor, please sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in executive session.